We have three basic items on our agenda tonight. A and R, approval not required for Oak Street. A special permit at 54 Plain Street Solar Facility Next Grid. And then a special permit at 308 East Main Street. A Bernian Phils application for site plan and special permit. As was the previous, the solar facility is a site plan and special permit. I passed around before we get started, the application for the A and R on Oak Street. And if you could come up, if you would, and identify yourself and explain what the purpose of the subdivision is.
Yes, my name is Renee Moniz and I'm on behalf of the applicant Northeast Gulf Properties, Incorporated. And we have filed a approval not required form, Form A, for the property located at 219 Oak Street in Norton, Mass, between the owner, R E F M L two LLC, and the applicant. What we are doing here is that we are just moving a lot line and there's no new lot line being moved. And the current conditions remain status quo and it's amicably resolving a dispute between the owner and the applicant. It is marked as a parcel A on your plan and it is 20 feet long. Do you see where?
I do.
Okay. And it's 20 feet long of that section and it's 375 feet long. So it's this section and it has already, there has been an encroachment existing since 1988 when the country club was redesigned. So it has been existing since that time. It was just when the owner did a survey of the property, they realized that the encroachment has existed.
So help me understand exactly who's getting what. Parcel A is going to who?
Parcel A is going to the golf course, yes.
Okay, and that's coming out of Lot 2A?
Yes. So you can see it, I printed off this, I'm not sure if I approach.
But it's this highlighted section right here, so it's already the existing hole down here.
Okay.
So it's part of like the cart path.
Are there questions from members of the board?
So it's this highlighted section right here. This is the current hole right here, so it's just pushing it back.
What is considered Lot 2 versus 2A? There's reference to Lot 2.
Prior to the split.
Referencing Lot 2 was originally approved on a plan dated 29/11. I just don't, I'm not seeing it on, I see Parcel A, Lot 2A.
Is Lot 2 the original which is now being divided? That's my interpretation.
Let me see here.
And now 2 is becoming 2A minus the little bit.
I believe that is correct.
So Lot 2 is becoming Lot 2A and Parcel A. Is that how?
Parcel A is going to the northeast.
Yeah, to Northeast Gulf Properties to this.
This is just a freestanding parcel, there's no frontage, is joining the other parcel?
It's joining this parcel.
So Parcel A is moving towards Northeast Gulf Properties.
But just a wooded lot right now?
Yes.
Right?
If you can see from the aerial photo.
Yeah.
Don't need frontage.
No, you can create, without frontage, obviously, it's not a buildable lot on its own. But just like Parcel A is being created.
I own Lot 2, it has 50 feet of frontage on Oak Street. It's eight, five times the area lot.
Well, I'm sorry.
The golf course has been encroaching on my property. We're giving them 20 feet so they don't have to ruin their holes.
Okay, I didn't see if the wetlands, almost delineated as a separate lot, but there is 50 feet of frontage on Oak Street.
With the Conservation Commission.
Yep. Thanks for the clarification.
But A is not buildable in any way.
Whatever happens to it is part of Northeast Gulf Properties. Any other questions? If there are no other questions, is there a motion to approve the A and R for Northeast Gulf Properties?
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, I'll just pass this down to the signee.
Thank you.
We just have four copies, so sign them all.
Okay, great. Thank you. Or I think we're signing all the copies.
Yeah, you're frank.
This just has.
The Mylar has. Yeah, I've only signed the Mylar.
Yes, honey, yes, honey.
Okay. So I won't worry about your paper. Paper one needs to go back to Joe. Paper one needs to go back to Joe.
Okay.
I want to make sure I have everybody on my.
He just, he just.
Okay.
Just let us have the first pass.
I haven't signed that one yet. I signed the Mylar and I'm in the process of signing these others.
I think you need to sign the other paper.
Yep. We have three, three paper copies? More than that?
We have more than Mylar.
Sure. Blocking. Stand up.
You ready?
Yeah, I was not prepared for.
No. You have handouts in there too. Okay, next item on the agenda is special permit 483 54 Plain Street Solar Facility, Next Grid Redwood LLC. And I assume you gentlemen are with Redwood?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind identifying yourselves.
Sure. So my name is Daniel Server.
They've got a mic at the table.
Okay. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, my name is Daniel Server, I'm with Next Grid Incorporated. We're a pretty small renewable energy company, but we're hardworking and realistic. We're trying to bring renewable energy to the United States and we really thank you guys for letting us bring the Plain Street project for your consideration. It's a relatively small development compared to some of the ones that have been discussed in the town recently. It's 1.3 megawatts covering just over six acres. It's set approximately 600 feet back from Plain Street. The project will offset roughly the energy usage of 250 homes. The site will be blocked from view from all residential homes by thick natural brush and an additional landscape buffer of giant aperviding and other NATO plants which we will be providing. Between the school and the project, we'll also be installing a four-foot berm in addition to the landscape buffer to add further screening. The project will utilize small string inverters as opposed to large central inverters. Those inverters are approximately four foot, or, sorry, four foot this way and two foot wide. And they put off far less sound than a traditional large inverter. In addition to the steps we've taken to mitigate this with residents and the school, we've also agreed to enter into a pilot program with the city that will total $400,000 over the lifespan of the project, which is 20 years. We're also working with the town to set up a program where they will be the 50% off-taker of the power of this project, saving the town an additional $24,000 a year. If the town works with us to do that, we'll also be providing the other 50 cent, 50% of off-take to local low-income residents and providing the butters of a property with a 30% discount of their power. Yeah, and we also want to enter into a productive private-public partnership with the school district to develop a state program and improve a few things at the elementary school there. We believe that this project's a win-win for the town and its residents and we're excited to move forward. With me is Rich with Atlantic Design Engineers. His firm provided all the engineering for this project and he's here to address some of the specific comments we received from the different departments here in Norton and answer a project specific question.
I'll go up here since it's closer to the board. Again, Rich Tabazinski from Atlantic Design Engineers, I just wanted to run through a couple of specifics in terms of the project and the presentation board and the plans that we have provided. But we have a presentation board here that, that we put together that is an aerial view of the property that shows the property boundaries in yellow and the solar, proposed solar array in light blue. There's also some wetland locations on the property, there's about five wetland areas and those are shown in light green with their associated buffer zones in red. But the project, the total acreage on the site is 11.4 acres, but the fenced-in area itself for the, that entails the solar panels is about 5.2. So we've designed the project in accordance with the large, your large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic bylaw, which requires some 75-foot setbacks from the road, 50-foot from abutting property lines. We feel that the project does meet those requirements and other aspects of the solar bylaw. Access will be off of Plain Street, obviously. There'll be a small portion of a paved road that will then taper down into a gravel access road that will lead into the site to approximately right here. And as Daniel mentioned, it's about 500 or 600 feet back from Plain Street for where the actual solar array and development will occur. There'll be, anything between that and Plain Street will just be the gravel access road and some stormwater facilities up adjacent to Plain Street. In addition, there'll be some overhead utility poles along this gravel road and then they'll be going into underground to serve the rest of the, rest of the facility. It will be fenced in completely, which is basically about 15 feet or so off of the blue area here, that's the solar array, but there's a fence that will surround the entire facility. That will be a seven-foot fence, security fence, will also providing a small gap underneath the fence to allow for small migration of wildlife from, you know, in and around the array and around some of the open space areas that surround the property. The, so we've submitted along with the set of site plans, a full application narrative explaining the project and how it complies with the bylaws, not only the zoning bylaws, but also your wetlands bylaw and Conservation Commission regulations in terms of the State Wetlands Protection Act. We have had one hearing with the Conservation Commission already that was about a month ago at this point and then we have another one scheduled for next week. We're in the process right now of revising plans to address comments that we've received from, from the planner, from the school committee and from the Conservation Commission and they hired a peer review consultant and engineering consulting firm that is, that has reviewed our plans and documents and has come up with some comments regarding the, mainly regarding the stormwater. And so we're, we're in the process of addressing those comments right now. We do have a set of revised plans that address the planning board's comments and the planner's planning staff comments. I can, wasn't sure if it was appropriate to hand those out now or just describe how we were addressing them, but we put together a set of revised plans and response letters to the planner's comments that I feel addresses all of his concerns, but obviously you're just seeing them now, so I'll have to go through that in general terms right now. As Daniel mentioned, there's been, there's some significant buffers between the project and the abutting school residences and some of the farm, farms that are on the east, east side of the property, which are all shown here on the, in the aerial view. I want to flip this board over, which shows, it'll actually provide some, setback distances from some of the abutting residences, just to, for your information purposes. But, you know, it's basically about 10 or 15 dimensions shown on here, but in terms of like the closest resident to the, the closest residence is probably this one back here is about 320 feet from, from the panels to the, to the house that's set back from, from Plain Street. There's also probably the closest resident along Plain Street is the butter here to the, to the, just to the east and closest panels are about 420 feet there. The distance to the school is 192 feet. So, and then distances of 600 feet or so to the residences on the other side of Plain Street, couple distances to some of the farm structures are also shown on this plan. But I just wanted to provide that to kind of reiterate the point that we have some very substantial buffers between the project and the abutting residences. And even off of Willis Drive and that development here, we're upwards of 500, 600 feet away of all natural wooded vegetation. Where there isn't, where we thought there isn't sufficient vegetation, we've worked with the planning department, Conservation Commission, to come up with some buffer plantings and some screenings. There's three, three primary areas where we'll be showing, where we'll be planting a mixture of evergreen type of screening plants. And those, one will be along Plain Street here, which will provide some screening for the resident, for the stormwater facilities in this location here. Then we'll be providing a row of plantings along this eastern property line where there's, Horse Farm is fairly close, it actually is pretty much cleared right up to our, to the project property line, so we're proposing some plantings, a row of plantings in that area. And then in this particular area, there's be another row of plantings where the project abuts the school playground area in the back and a portion of the school building. Those plantings will also be supplemented with a berm that we're proposing, a four-foot-high earthen berm, where the plantings will be basically on top and around that berm, so that will provide some additional screening in that location there. So again, though, we feel that we, as Daniel had mentioned, that we feel we have a very, kind of an isolated project back here that will have, you know, minimal to no impacts on any of the abutting residences or the school itself. So that's basically it. I can hand out our response letter that we put together, if you'd like, for, that addresses the planner's comments and the school comments, along with a set of revised plans. Like I said, they're still in the, in the works that, where we're trying to iron out some stormwater details with the, with the town's peer review consultants, so I wasn't sure if I should hand those out or wait till, submit those until we, after we've addressed the stormwater issues.
Well, if you have them now, and I assume that, you know, the potential is that they may change, but let's.
Sure, yeah, I can.
That's what you have.
And then I'll basically hand out copies of the response letters too, which explains how we address the comments.
Two sets only, so.
Okay. Can you, just briefly, if you haven't already done that, explain how the March 5th set plans changed from what you showed up there, or is that, have you already gone over the?
This, this presentation board does reflect those, those updated plans. The major changes from the, from the original submitted drawings relate to, well, this, this berm that's been proposed along this property line here. There's also been an adjustment to the fence location in this area here at the request of the Conservation Commission and also back here to provide a better corridor for wildlife in the north-south direction. And we also added a number of notes and designation to address the fire department's comments, which are outlined in their, in the response letter. And also, the Conservation Commission had a number of comments regarding our operation and maintenance plan, erosion control measures, things like that, which really don't affect the layout of the site and setbacks and other issues, but it's more related to stormwater. In addition, we've also had, changed the screening that's been proposed. Originally, we had just a row of our provides. The comment was, let's provide some variety to that. And so we've provided a whole planting plan and schedule with details that show what this berm looks like and what these plantings will look like, so that's been added to the drawing now also. We've updated our decommissioning plan at the request of the town, the town planner. And again, we've addressed the, the fire department had about five or six comments that included everything from custody, the means of disconnect for the facility, clarifying the fence height and knock box and locations for him to access the site. So it's a lot of, I guess I would say minor detailed issues were addressed on those plans. The basic size and location of the, of the facility is essentially the same as what the previous set of plans showed. So that's basically it. I'll open it up for any questions at this point.
I'm sorry. Were you going to make a comment?
Uh, no, we can go ahead and move forward with questions.
Two questions, kind of just.
Sure.
You mentioned at the beginning that you were planning to use smaller string inverters rather than one large inverter. Based on the plan, I was wondering where those are located in the array?
Sure.
And then the other question, I noticed that you were, this was being put through the SMART program?
Yes, sir.
I was wondering what the agricultural component of the project was.
We are not going for any agricultural adder. This doesn't qualify for the agricultural program, SMART program. The only adder we are looking to do is the low-income community solar adder. And that's what I discussed, the town being a 50% off-taker and then 50% roughly to the low-income residents along the butters. We're trying our best to do that with the BZAs, these three sets. If you're interested, I have the manufacturer spec sheet for the, the inverters, show the size and perhaps some details for town and stuff like that.
And I should just note that on the revised set of plans that you have, the inverter locations are identified on the, on them.
Just roughly on the?
Sure. Basically, they're at the end of the rows along this side till about this location here, and then they switch on to this side of the, over in this location here, so that we had a better separation from the school. So I would say the cutoff lines about this location for, for where they're on the.
They switch west side.
West side and then east side, yep.
So string inverters are like the large inverters, but they're quite a bit smaller and they, they work at a string level. They're the same inverters you might see at a parking structure at a lot of high schools. They have string inverters on the end of one row, very similar to ones you've seen.
Yeah, because the inverters are the piece that makes the noise and does all of that, so that's.
Yeah, it's converting, yeah.
How many, how many rows and consequently, how many inverters will you have? Is the sound level cumulative?
I didn't bring the, that site. We have those numbers in the middle.
You have 25 inverters. I don't know if you've updated, but.
No.
It's the same, yeah.
Because you, I assume there's information on, in terms of sound level in the, in the spec sheet here, but that's for one. If you've got 24, what's the cumulative effect of 24 in terms of off-site noise?
You know, it's not that much from my experience, so we don't have a decibel study for that. The only decibel study that's been done is by the state of Massachusetts. It said that even the large inverter is not audible 50 to 100 feet from the inverter and we are set back more than that from any abutter and from the school.
The list of those studies in H in this booklet?
All right.
Yeah. And also, just to adjust that, in terms of sound from these, it's not, 24 inverters isn't 24 times as loud as one inverter. Just the sound pressure levels don't work that way. So it's basically, the, the studies that were done, that Daniel had mentioned, were completed by Tech Environmental from Mass Clean Energy Center and they basically went out to three solar facilities very close to this and a little bit larger that, and took sound levels after the project was up and running. And the, the basic bottom line is that beyond, beyond 50 feet, nothing could be heard. When they were, they took measurements about 10 feet away and they could be heard. Once they got close to the fenced-in area, the, which is about 15 feet off of the panels, the levels were diminishing to almost nothing and beyond that, they couldn't be heard over any ambient sound that's in the area. So that was not any study that projected sound or estimated what the sound was actually was in actual field measurements of ground-mounted solar facilities, very similar to this, that existed. So these are actual sound levels that, that were measured by, by a reputable engineering firm. And those are also measured from central inverters, which are large, large boxes that are scattered throughout the array, which are a lot larger than what we're proposing here. So the sound levels here would be even less than that and really not anticipated to be heard. heard outside the fenced-in area. I, I don't, that's what our estimate would be.
I mean, tho- those would only be, um, active during daytime hours?
Yes.
Right, not at nighttime? So once this, you know, once they, you know, more or less sun drops low enough?
Yep, exactly. It's just during the day when, most of the time, ambient noise is, is up a lot higher at, during the day than it is during, uh, during the nighttime, and that's when these will be generating the small amount of noise. But, uh, again, it's not gonna, basically not anticipated to be heard anywhere surrounding the, the property because of just the ambient noise and the fact that it's during the day.
Are these enclosed in any way, or are they exposed to the weather?
They're exposed. I mean, they're housed in, it's powdered aluminum that's casing around the inverter that you see right, right there, yeah?
Is there any existing solar field you can give us as an example for the same size as this?
In the town of Norton?
Just in general, anywhere in the state of Massachusetts, or, just an example of one that currently exists with, that's the same size.
Just trying to think of the closest one. We've done one on the Cape, um, for the Cape, uh, for the Canal Energy Plant. It's a little bit larger than this. It's about 1.8 megawatts versus this one here at 1.4. Uh, that one, again, has been, been up and running for quite a while.
It has string inverters?
I believe so, yes, yeah.
That's in Bourne, you said?
In Bourne, yep. It's actually on the Bourne, actually in Sandwich, it's right on the Bourne-Sandwich line, right near the big power plant that's down there. They put in a, a solar facility that's right adjacent to it.
Question, you said...
And I know that, just as mentioned, I know the ones that were studied were in Wareham, there's one in South Borough and one in Norfolk. Those are the ones that they did the sound studies on.
Was one in Wareham?
Yes.
All three?
All three of them.
All from the same site?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are the three sites that were the subject of the sound studies that the state had done.
And they were all in residential areas? You mentioned the one in the Canal, so they're all...
Yeah, one was on an open cranberry bog area, um, that didn't have any wooded buffers to it, so that's, you know, they're all, all sites are different. Um, they're all, they, but again, they, I think, there's quite a few of these cropping up all over the state these days, and, um, there's, you know, uh, the, the study that the CEC did, you know, focused on constructed sites, not trying to just estimate what sound might be. So that's what I think is, is important about that study that was done.
Question about the fence. You mentioned it's gonna be a seven-foot-high fence around the whole perimeter?
Yes.
You mentioned there's gonna be a gap at the bottom for, you said, wildlife. How big of a gap from the ground to the notch of the fence would that be?
It would be six inches.
Six inches, okay.
Yeah.
And you mentioned...
That, that comes standard from the Conservation Commission.
Mm-hmm. That's a good question. You mentioned 192 feet from the property lines or from the building, elementary school, to the fence?
Oh, uh, to the, from the building.
The building?
Yeah.
So the school does abut the fence of the solar field?
Uh, yes, yeah. In terms of the fence itself, I can get a dimension, but the, the panels to the property line are probably about a little over 50 feet in that particular area. Because the setback that's required by your bylaws is 50 feet, so we're, I think we're at 55 feet in this location here, closest panel to the school property line.
So it's 50 feet from your side of the fence? Sorry, sorry?
50 feet from the panels to the school property line.
To the school property line.
Okay.
Yeah. And so between that, in that 50-foot area, they'll, we'll be building that berm with the plantings on it, and then on our side of that berm, there'll be an access road right along that, and then the fence and the panels.
Gotcha.
In that, basically in that 50-foot area.
I just, I don't know if I can answer this question, I'm not familiar with the elementary school. Is the playground on the, on the east side or the behind?
Playground is behind.
Playground's, uh, you can see it right here.
It's right there, okay.
Yeah.
So how close is, would that playground be distance-wise?
Do you have that number for the inver- the, the town requested a...
Yeah, the, the location, uh, the nearest inverter is on the other side over here, and that's about 230 feet from the edge of that playground, to the closest inverter, which would be on the other side of this panel. So that's this distance here.
How many feet again, sorry?
230.
Julie?
So, I'm just gonna put a disclaimer out there. I have a son who attends that elementary school who's a first grader, so I want to make sure that's kind of just on the record. I don't think it impacts my, my ability to vote, but I wanted to make sure that that was kind of just out there to let you know that I'm a parent who has a child that goes there. Um, my first question is, how high up are the panels going to be off the ground?
Do you have the side view?
Yeah, I mean, there's, um, there's a detail that's in your drawings there, but the, on the high end, they're basically about six feet or so, a little, little, six and a half maybe.
Okay. And then, I did read on the plans that the house and the garage are staying. You guys are not demolishing those facilities that are technically on the frontage of plane right now? Do you have any plans for those?
It's our intention to remodel the home and make it our home in Massachusetts. Um, and we'd like the office space in Norton to make this our, our eastern headquarters, um, is our goal. So, um, we're still working with the local contractor, see if we're gonna demolish the garage. Um, we also wanna have a car here, so we might wanna rebuild it, but either way, right now, it's kind of derelict. We're gonna definitely replace it or remove it completely. Um, the Conservation Commission's hoping we remove it, so the deers have a clear path. Um, but we're, we're still working that out.
Okay.
Our property is zoned R60?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. And then, obviously, the plant, can you just give us a high-level timeline of what you would envision as this project, you know, start to finish, should everything be approved? Um, obviously, there's gonna be a lot of tree cutting as a part of this, so...
Yeah, so, you know, if all this goes smoothly over the next few months, we'd, we'd like to develop, you know, closer to the superintendent and make sure all construction is done during the summer. Um, tree cutting and then, you know, assembling of the steel, um, you know, that whole process might take, you know, no more than four weeks. Um, that's when any noise happens. We work with residents to make sure we establish, um, you know, times of the day that are appropriate for them, so, you know, we're not keeping anybody awake or waking them up early. Um, and then, we hope we can get all the panels installed and the system commissioned within six weeks, which is pretty normal for a project this size.
In terms of installing the, the racks and, and panels, the supports for those, how far, you know, how are those being, you know, installed into the ground? How deep, if you're, you know...
Yeah, so this, uh, at this area, the stormwater, I mean, the, the groundwater is actually really high, so in all likelihood, we will be ballasting this system and not driving piles at all. So, it'll be, it'll be weights on top of...
It's, yeah, frankly, it's to be determined. They'll have to do some geotech work and come up with a foundation design, but typically there's, it's either ballast or drilled piles, sometimes there's screw anchors. It's, depends on what the geotech will recommend for the site that's the most cost-effective for the, for the, for the property.
Well, question ahead. Paul, they filed for permits under 22.2E.
Yes.
Is this the old one or is this the, the new one?
The old. They filed under the old one, because this came in right around the time of the, of the special town meeting.
They filed before the town meeting or...
I think, uh, two days before the town meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a good, I had that question too, Aron, I'm glad you asked that, because I was slightly confused as well.
Yeah.
It falls under?
Still, well, there's an open question, depending on whose lawyer you believe.
I believe in the new project, or the new rule will come into effect right until the state votes.
Well, that's, that's subject to debate, but nevertheless, you filed before town meeting, so it's still under our zoning bylaw. Thus, we need...
We just wanted to clarify, because...
That's really immaterial.
The application talks about 22.2E, and I'm not sure what that is at this point. Um, the spec sheet you gave us had a couple of different things across the top. Is there one in particular you're referring to, the spec sheet?
I'm sorry, I gave away all my... Okay, yeah, ours are the 60, uh, the 60/60, so we're using the 60-kilowatt inverters.
Okay. Can you tell us, um, I'm sure you may have it, but what, what are these composed of? Any chemicals in these inverters? What's the...
There's no chemicals in inverters. Um, it's just normal electronic equipment. I don't have any of the specifics on the inverters.
What about the panels themselves? You know what they're made of?
Did bring that information. Um, so, um, this is the project's AP sheet, it has all the materials that are inside the panels themselves. Now, there's some concern about thin, something technology panels, have toxic chemicals that could reach out. We do not use those panels.
So, which of the ones, there was, was the one that you, tier one? What's the one that we, they were saying, there's a...
Are these, are these tier one panels?
Tier one?
These tier one panels?
Yeah.
Are these fixed panels or are they, are they movable?
Fixed tilt?
Fixed tilt?
Yeah. Where'd you say they were produced? Uh, these will actually be produced in Georgia, but the company is based in South Korea, and, um, the engineering was done in Germany. They just opened up a giant factory in Georgia, so all the, the size will be coming from that facility.
Now, the wiring between these are gonna be underground?
Uh, up until a certain, it'll be connecting with the normal lines on the street, and then it'll step down into underground.
Yeah.
Around the site.
Now, throughout the field though, is the, are these the wire, the connections are gonna be underground or above?
Yes, yeah.
So the field itself?
Oh, within here?
Yeah, yes.
I mean, there'll be, there'll be some underground, but then it'll, it'll run up into the, underneath of the panels, to where the inverters are. But basically, there's poles here and then beyond that, it's all underground.
Um, the, the, the area around it is all R20?
Sixty.
R60.
Sixteen, sorry, R60?
Yep.
Now, um, beyond the school, could you just tell me what's occupying the, the various land around it? I see there's some houses to the right.
There's almost all single-family homes, um, and then there's three, sorry, excuse me. So there's three homes here. Um, right here, there's a facility that looks like, you know, they train horses, um, and then there's another woman that lives right here. She has this horse facility here, she does rescue of horses, and, um, then there's a gentleman that lives here, and I talked with him, I believe it's just a normal job. So, he, he doesn't have a animal property.
And to the left of the property, is that owned by the town?
This is the school, and then this is all conservation.
Conservation.
Including the land in the back too, is conservation land.
Okay. Now, have you spoke, you, you said, um, in your presentation, you were going to be talking to the residents. Have you spoken to them yet?
So, it might be a month and a half ago, I knocked on every door of the butters list, and I left, uh, packets with maps and description in a letter with my information. Um, four of those butters answered the door, and I received two phone calls, um, from residents.
Okay, and have you worked with them relative to describing what kind of landscaping you were gonna be putting in?
So, the two residents that, well, the, everybody that I talked to, I showed the plans and went through them with them, and, and yeah. Uh, and then the two people that called, um, I listened to their concerns, um, I tried to describe the landscaping, but it was over the phone. Um, I don't know if the conversations were particularly helpful for them to better understand the project, but, you know, I am always available. I'll make myself available after the presentation, anytime anyone would like to call me.
All the fencing and landscaping is within your property line?
Yes.
Um, you had a plan for, um, Paul, the other thing, you have, the access drive, you're saying you're reducing to 15 feet with comprised of gravel. Has the fire department signed off on your access to this field?
Yes, he didn't have any really comments about access or vehicular access that we had to address. I thought there, there was more along the lines of the shut-off and other things, so...
Well, meetings we had, well, in the meetings, we had, uh, the, the fire department wasn't there, but building commissioner, the discussion was whether the access should be between about 18 to 20 feet, because we do need to maintain it for, for fire truck, uh, access. So, I think we landed on about, on 20 feet for the, the entire circumference, or the entire length of the access road.
Well, I think you said the access road shuts off almost where the, the school ends? Doesn't go all the way down the property?
Basically, the access road en, ends right here. That's, that's gonna be a, a formed gravel roadway, um, but there is room to get around the panels all the way around, that would basically be a grassed area that, that could be drivable.
Well, if you're having inverters throughout the field, I mean, those are the only things that are probably susceptible to fire or if it's hit with, with something, is, they have access to that?
I would say that the fire access does need to be gravel. I don't believe they would accept it, especially, you know, wet weather, and they need access to, immediate access to the inverters.
Okay. Is there, um, I don't know if you could send me the fire chief's contact information? Just because I know he wasn't at the last meeting, but...
He's been out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll get it.
Just so we can get that ironed out, that'd be great.
Okay.
Because I know, I mean, each town where we do work in the, seems to have different requirements. We've used a 15-foot road on a lot of them, and that's been fine, but we'll, we'll work with the, with the town and the fire department on that.
One of the other projects we're working on has one big in converter, inverter, and we, they needed to make sure to get access to that. I just don't know how these chain inverters work, but I'm assuming if there's something hit by a storm or some problem, they may need to get access to them, and I don't think going up a third of the way would help. Um, I, I saw some notes from the, from the school department, have you spoken with them and addressed their concerns?
Yeah, we, we had a meeting last Thursday, was it? Thursday? Um, and, so they, I don't have the, the comments in front of me, but, um, one of the things they talked about was, uh, removing trees, uh, that had died on the school property. We were definitely 100% willing to do that during our other tree clearing. Um, they wanted, uh, the additional berm height.
They wanted you to move the property, to move it back, uh, 50 to 100 feet back from the property line? Is that something? Now, that's, where it looks like, that's the skinniest part of, of your solar array is really where the, where the nursery school, where the playground is. Is there any chance of thinning your ray out to give them about 100 foot back from the property line there?
In this area here. If there's, uh, if there's no other way around it, I think, I mean...
I mean, I say, I'm just looking, it looks, it's fairly thin, there's not a lot in that area?
Yeah, there's not a lot, um...
And I think that would probably, eliminating that or bringing it back, uh, would probably go a long way in making some people a little bit more comfortable.
Okay. Um, I obviously need to talk to the owners of my company before I make a bilateral decision about that, but it's definitely something that we will have fully addressed by the next...
Okay. And they also raised the question of noise levels at points. You've addressed that, um, you're projecting, you believe. Is there any way we can take some, some testing to make sure it's maintained at a certain level and come back, either have a base level and then go back to make sure it's maintained? I don't know how these inverters deal over time, whether they make more noise as they get older? I doubt they make less noise, so I'm assuming they make more noise, uh, and that is a concern that I think the school department raised, and I think we would share that with them.
So, inverters aren't making noise for the most part from moving parts, which is what would get louder with age. It's just a, a hum of electricity. I don't think that gets higher as time goes on. I think any risk in increase in noise would be more of a result of the thinning of the landscape buffer. Um, and we are definitely willing to, you know, bond that landscape buffer and make sure it's maintained for the life of the project.
You provided a maintenance agreement for the buffer, I believe, for the landscaping? Continued maintenance?
Uh, at this point, uh, no. We haven't submitted a maintenance agreement, no.
There was a maintenance agreement for stormwater, I believe, for the stormwater...
Yes, yeah. But again, we've, we've, going through the process here, that's something that will be provided, and we accept the condition. We accept the condition that we provide it, but we haven't actually physically given, given or submitted a maintenance agreement, no.
It is part of your operation and maintenance plan?
Yes.
Yes, that's, I think, what you're referring to.
Yeah, is that for the stormwater though?
It's landscaping.
We have, we have one for stormwater, and we have one for the, for the entire project.
And you said some private-public relationship, we're talking about updating the playground and other classroom areas?
Yeah, so we did have a discussion with the city manager about foregoing the first year of our pilot and giving that money directly to the town, or directly to the school to do the playground. That was ultimately disallowed by the BZ, the Board of Supervisors?
Selectmen.
Selectmen, Board of Selectmen. So they want the school district to go to them directly for that money. So that's where it's at right now, and we will be working with them, though, for tree removal and building of their STEM program. They mentioned teaching their teachers about photovoltaics and possibly doing some field trip, you know, out there and showing how, how the panels work. You know, and we're going to work in good faith with the school to do as much as we can.
You provided a decommission plan. I know that Paul had raised some issues with it. I'm particularly concerned with your putting in a salvage value. My understanding is the decommission plan comes if, basically, you guys go somewhere else, and you're leaving it up to the town to dismantle what you put up there. I take it from, I don't, I suspect our town is not in the business of getting rid of solar panels, and so I wouldn't put the burden on us of seeking to get any salvage value out of them. If you want to get salvage value, you remove them before it's time to get rid of them. So I would suggest, whatever the number comes out to be, you would not include a salvage value in terms of decommissioning this project.
Understood, yeah. We're in the process now of updating and revising that decommissioning plan to eliminate any salvage value from the equations. And there was also some questions regarding some of the machinery rates and stuff that were used. So we're revising it and updating it right now, and it's going up, obviously. The, the number for the severity amount is going up.
There's that gone up in the letter that you passed around.
I didn't read it yet.
Yeah, it's okay.
The peer review that's being undertaken now is mainly conservation. Is that including anything, Paul, that we're looking at as well in the peer review?
Well, they're, they're looking strictly at the wetlands and stormwater.
Other questions? Just in the interim, it's not for this board to determine whether you are compliant with zoning. It's the building inspector, but I just want to put it out there. You may have an issue with the ability to use in an R sixty zone, a building for office purposes. I just...
We're going to live there and then get office.
Oh, oh, I didn't...
Yeah, Paul told us that real, real fast.
No, I thought you were talking about converting the building to a residence. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that didn't go unaddressed. Other members of the board have questions at the moment?
The, all the testing and all that data in here is very thorough and helpful.
I'll open it up to the audience, and there are a couple of town officials. Dr. Beata had his hand up first, so...
I can give it up to the residents first, it's fine.
Well, now, since you're in a, you know, probably the most directed butter, I think the board would welcome hearing from you, and Mr. Kimball back there, I defer to, just out of longstanding experience with him, so...
Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board. So we did meet...
Oh, I'm sorry. It's not, it's not for the audience here, it's TV.
It's not for us.
And it's, you know, that's a lot different than this. Good evening, thank you for the opportunity. I did meet with, with Dan, the building commissioner, Paul, and the Board of Health as well about a week ago just to take up some of the comments from our twelfth February memo that I also CC'd you folks on or put towards you. I guess my only comments for today that I really have based upon, I haven't seen the revised, updated information, so I'd like to get my hands on that as well, is the comment that you made, sir, about taking a potential look at how close the beginning of that project is to the building itself. My biggest concern is you're going to, in the future, see solar panels within our schools, because that's a driving area, is that this, the research that you have before you as it pertains to sound isn't about these inverters, number one, and number two, it's six years old. And this industry has grown in the last twenty-four to thirty-six months pretty significantly. So I echo your comments about, you know, how the Commonwealth, although providing a lot of opportunities for companies and so on, the information that you have before you is relatively, I would say, old for research. Anything beyond five years in my field, we consider to be older. And it may not be the responsibility of the company, but since this was a private piece of property that abuts the school system, that's sold for minuscule money, in this day and age of real estate, one of the concerns that I have with municipal buildings like I have is the potential for other situations to take place throughout the town with any of the other schools. Again, I'm not sure that's with the planning board or the Board of Selectmen, but that's a concern that I would have. The community I live in, the right of first refusal is usually provided to the community in terms of the municipality or schools to be able to purchase the land or take it, so it's not allowed for whatever investment is being made. Again, I'll, I'll let the folks above me on the Board of Selectmen and others potentially address that. My only other concern that I have on the question of the berms is, as a person who just did one personally in my backyard, four feet is nice, but maybe I didn't do a good one, but it does lower. So we've been pushing, I know the building commissioner's been pushing five, six, more of a five-foot burn than a four, because it is going to settle. And when it settles, does it actually lower it to more like a three-foot because of the settling that takes place? And then lastly, on this information that you have before you, is the idea of the pilot, which Mike Unis did inform myself earlier, and I think, Paul, you were part of that as well, as it pertains to the pilot. When I met with Dan, our conversation about some type of financial donation to help us with the cost of upgrading the kind of older playground was something they'd be willing to listen to. But I think there's a little bit of a clarification that needs to take place, where the pilot program doesn't allow for that twenty thousand to come directly to me. I have to work out, hopefully in good faith, some type of other funds so that the pilot stat and goes directly to the town as by D O R regulations. So those are kind of the, the general issues. Noise is probably my biggest concern. I appreciate the fencing. I understand the six inches or so because of, of natural life, wildlife in the area. And just bear with me for a second. That's all I have for tonight, but I would like to see the upgraded plans and potentially revert. I'll do it in memo form or come back if needed.
Thank you. Questions of Dr. Beata? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kimball.
Evening, Bob Kimball, fifty-one Pine Street, member of the Board of Selectmen. I want to clarify one thing. The Board of Selectmen, there are three of us in the building tonight watching this for the first time. We have not had any conversation at all about this new solar facility. So we need to be clear about that first and foremost. We did not agree to take in the first twenty thousand dollars in the first year, diverting that money. That was probably a conversation that was had by the town manager, but not with the Board of Selectmen. We are meeting with these folks in a week or two for our own presentation. We've adopted a new bylaw, Selectmen bylaw, where from now on, any commercial solar facility like this to come into town will come before us first. We need to work out the details of it. We've got some issues on one in Hill Street right now, where they're filing for abatements because they fear we're over-assessing them on, on the value of the equipment. So we want to be clear in the future that that doesn't happen anymore. But getting back to the twenty thousand per year, it's my opinion, and I can only speak for myself, there were three of us in the building tonight watching this for the first time, Selectmen. But my, my personal opinion is twenty thousand dollar a year should go directly to the town, including the first year. As far as the playground goes, my recommendation would be it, it'd be removed to another location. And I only say that because, as we know, we've all had kids, most of us have all had kids. Children are very curious, and when you've got a facility that's bordering on a fenced-in area with a bunch of cells sitting out there, it kind of distracts or may, may draw attention to it. And my suggestion would be that the developer work out the details with the school committee and the superintendent to relocate the facility, the playground facility itself, away from the fence to maybe another spot on the property. And I don't think the town should have to pay for that. And as far as, again, it's a twenty thousand per year for, for twenty years. We haven't had no conversation, the B O S has had no conversation at all about that so far. I'm pretty sure D O R does, does restrict us on how much we can, we can put, put as far as the pilot goes, but we're not there yet. So I want to be clear on that tonight, that we're still, we're hearing about this for the first time. We've yet to have our conversation with the developer, and we'll do so in the very near future.
Just so I'm clear, Bob, the twenty thousand that's being thrown around is not a number that has, has been arrived at through any type of negotiation. And things have changed in terms of pilots from when I was more involved.
Yeah.
So I don't know the mechanics, but what I do know is a pilot, this is to the school committee, pilot monies are general fund monies that need to be appropriated if they're going to be spent, and they can't be earmarked unless there's a separate agreement out of, out of the generosity of the applicant to...
Right. And that's why I'm suggesting tonight that the payment in lieu of taxes, the pilot, is something that we will negotiate. The Board of Selectmen are the only ones that can negotiate that. And once that is done, perhaps we could get the developers to take a look at their playground and do something different for the town. Okay?
We would be happy to work that out with you. I just wanted to let you guys know that that number we came up with, with the assessor and the city manager, we have not talked to Board of Selectmen at all about any of this, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Could you just come up as...
We just need them to give me information, three quick things.
But, sir, if you could use the mic, only because the audience at home can't, can't hear you, and I would just ask you to identify yourself.
Tom Garota, twenty-five Plain Street. Truck traffic during construction and after. Where exactly is your access road in relationship to the house in the garage? And I had a third one. It'll come to me.
You can see the, on, on the aerial right here where the...
Oh, yeah, that, that's the third one.
So here's the house and...
The wastewater, or your storm drain?
Yeah.
What is that going to look like? And is it visible?
First of all, because of the conversations we're having right now at the Conservation Commission, what they're actually talking about is us doing core samples to see how much water's going to filter into the ground. And if those come out a certain way, those might be eliminated altogether, correct? So I don't want to answer now, because that could change after those core samples are completed. But right now, why don't you describe what they would look like if they stayed?
Yeah, I mean, due to groundwater levels on the site, they'll probably be very shallow, maybe a foot, maybe two feet deep, something like that. And they would be vegetated, grassed, and we'd also proposing between the basin and Plain Street, some planting, some evergreen plantings to, so essentially, when you're driving by, you wouldn't really see them, see the, see the basin. But it would be a vegetated basin that would have a very shallow, shallow cover to it. The, and it would just be to the right of where the existing driveway is right now. You know, the driveway comes in and loops around. The eastern driveway is approximately where the new access road to the, to the facility will be, and the basin, the small retention basin will be just to the right over east of that.
So where the trees are now?
Uh, yes, there are some trees there, yeah.
Truck traffic?
So, Paul, do you have, Rich, do you have information on vehicle traffic during construction?
I don't, no.
I, you know, general rules we follow, and then we can, we can do calculations and get those to you directly. But with the steel, the panels and the inverters, there's about eighteen, or eight, eighteen-wheeler deliveries. And then there's approximately fifteen onsite workers that generally drive their own cars to the site. There's foreman trucks, and then the grading will happen, you know, before those deliveries, and that's, that's a few, a few trucks. And then after construction, there's one planned cleaning a year. There's maintenance as needed, so this is all monitored remotely at a string level. So we'll be able to see if any inverter trips, if any panel gets turned off, and then we'll send, you know, a single truck out there to fix that problem. It's really not often at all, so...
If I could just add one thing to that, we, the, we're not really doing a lot of earthwork on the site. We're not re-grading and moving hills over here and that you'd seem, that you'd see normally on a construction site. The, the site's moderately flat right now. There's not a lot of relief to it, and we're not going to be changing that just, first of all, to maintain the existing drainage patterns. But again, there's no need. The panels can be pretty much placed on a slope, so we're not, there wouldn't be a ton of earthwork going on in the site. Definitely won't be any trucks full of dirt leaving the property, we, you know, that you would sometimes see on another construction site.
Yes, what, the woman behind you, Ms. Aiden?
Hello, so my name is Janice Hedon. I live at fourteen Clap Street, and I do have a question about the inverters. So I live next to a solar farm, and I have a child who has special needs, a sensory processing disorder. When we came up to the town, when we were trying to fight the one going in in our neighborhood, it was addressed, and we were told, you're not going to hear it. And a lot of the times, we're talking about the decibels, and it's not the decibels, it's the megahertz. So ours is registering at times of the day nineteen thousand megahertz. My daughter has virtually been a prisoner in our home for a year since it's been energized, and I have done everything I can and to try to get them to fix it. How will this affect children at the L G? I mean, she started at the L G in Project Early, and Norton prides themselves on being a school of inclusion. And if you put these kids in that situation, they will not be able to play outside. My daughter runs off the school bus every day, sorry, into my house and has to go in her room because we cannot, she cannot be on the right side of my house because that inverter is going nonstop. And I've contacted the town manager, I've contacted the owner of the facility, I've contacted Wheaton College, and the planning board has been helping us recently, but it has been a fight, and I can't imagine, after all the wonderful things and experiences she had at Project Early, what that is going to do. So when you're talking about sound, you guys are talking about decibels. And yes, the decibel is, is low. It's the frequency, it's the pitch that is, they could feel it, and it is heartbreaking to watch. How are you going to address that, having this next to a school? Thank you.
Thank you.
One question?
Can I ask you?
How far are you from the inverter?
Dean, what do you think, three hundred feet?
I would say three hundred feet.
About three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet from a big central inverter?
From a central inverter. And I do, I do understand from my research, and I'm not an engineer, that a string inverter is quieter because you're breaking up. How you're breaking up was AC to DC or DC to AC, but it is, it is unbearable to watch her. She can't be outside, and even for me, it's uncomfortable to be in my backyard on a sunny day. And in the winter and in the spring, I guess when the sun is closest to the earth, it's louder. It's actually louder during the school year than it is during the summer, when, when the sun, I guess, is further away. I don't know.
Okay.
I, I, I can imagine that there will be parents of children that will, their kids will be in school, and they will not know why they're having a sensory meltdown, because they're not, they may not hear it, but these kids, I live, living this every day, they will hear it. And I just have to speak for those who can't speak for themselves, because they're vulnerable little kids, and they're, they're, these are little kids in that school. And it's not that I don't like solar energy, but I, I have, being a parent of a child who has been basically, in my opinion, sold out for the greater good, I can't imagine it happening to anyone else's, anyone else's kid.
I understand.
So if you could address the megahertz that's admitted, not the decibel level?
Okay.
Thank you.
So we will...
Yeah, and I don't even live near the school. I'm just, I'm just here because this has been...
Oh, I understand, they're, they're special needs kids.
Oh, I understand, they're special needs kids at that school, and it's been brought to our attention.
Yeah.
I mean, we can start by definitely building the berm up higher. I know dirt is one of the best things to reduce sound, especially low decimal megahertz type sound. I do not know any megahertz numbers on string inverters off the top of my head, you know, but we don't want to be doing any harm like that. And, you know, if we do keep those panels low where they are, we can put something in there that if anybody's having, you know, adverse reactions, we can move those nearest inverters up to a reasonable, you know, distance away.
Joe, do you know what type of inverters were on the Clap Street? I wasn't involved in that.
I don't know the type. They are, for lack of a better term, central. In other words, they're, I believe, is it one per, there are two solar farms, there's one per each?
One for each.
Yeah, there's two inverters, one per each farm.
So the larger... Essential inverters usually come in 500, 750, or 1,000 kilowatts size, so... But I, you know, our company does not want to be causing any pain to anybody, so...
So that the reason for using the string inverters here is to reduce the sound, or is it...
I mean, we just...
Convenience? Is that your preferred, you know?
We prefer string inverters on projects of this size. I just think, I mean, it makes more sense for a lot of reasons, but obviously, we are in a residential neighborhood, so we would do that regardless.
I'm sorry. No, I was just going to add, I mean, again, I wasn't involved in the Clap Street, so maybe it's something to think about as far as follow-up after the fact with any issues, like you said, increasing the berm after it's produced, or after it's built.
Well, obviously, this isn't our only solar farm under consideration, but I think one of the considerations that we, as a board, need to share with the applicants and ultimately their butters is that we need to have some, in my humble opinion, some conditioning in terms of sound, and I'm not equipped to say how megahertz frequency fits into that, but some type of language that indicates there'd be no discernible sound level off-site. But again, that's a bit down the road.
My comment was more for mediation after the fact, so that would be something that we put in as a stipulation, but, yeah, I don't know the wording either, but...
Yeah, I've been in touch a while back with, I was in touch with an acoustical engineer, and I'd really like to reach back out. I didn't ask him about the issue of what language would he recommend or know of, or we can do some research, because it is, you know, noise is a very tricky thing. You know, the state standard for a nuisance is roughly, if you're, I hope I'm correct, but 10 decibels above background. And if you're under that by state nuisance laws, you're not a nuisance, but as you tell, in some cases, that increase, let's say if it's eight or nine decibels, could be a real issue. So we need to just carefully write it so that it's fair, but it is picking up things like megahertz and, you know, frequencies. And so I want to just do a little bit more research and figure out what that, what that language could look like.
Yeah, I just don't want anybody to feel like there's nothing they can do after the fact, like...
Yeah, my thought is frankly, condition it in advance so that everyone is on notice that, you know, and I'm certainly not a sound engineer, but to use a layman's approach to this, I'm sure a dripping faucet in the master bedroom, bathroom next to the master bedroom is well below 10 decibels. But if that's dripping, that'll drive you crazy. And that's part of what's going on on Clap Street. You know, it's not, at least, you know, I have visited Mrs. Hayden's home, and it's not overwhelming, but it's discernible. And again, I can't speak to how it affects her daughter, but the sound coming from the inverters is discernible, and, you know, the more you think about it, the more annoying I'm sure it is. And, yeah, I'd like to see some type of language for the projects that we, you know, this included, that we have in front of us, that the sound, you know, the owners should be on the applicant to figure out a way that makes that sound not discernible to a butters. You know, if it's noisy on their property, that's their issue to deal with, but I don't think neighbors should have to deal with it nonetheless. Sir, you had your hand up and...
Jim Downey, 29 Plain. Several questions or actually concerns. If you've been on this property site during baseball season on Plain Street, you'll know that this entire area we're talking about is a virtual parking lot. Whatever you've got going on in the solar farm, either tomorrow or two years from now, is going to be impacted by the seasonal interruption in our quality of life. Just to put you on notice that you can either move the baseball field, or just be aware that there's going to be an issue there. The second thing I kind of thought about in running a facility a number of years ago, we were always told that there should be several points of entrance and egress. If you had a problem somewhere back here in the solar farm, and this was blocked off, and the potential for, and I imagine this would be the fire department that would have to talk about this, but you can't get in here if this is blocked. And then I guess the third question that I had, and maybe this isn't the place to do this, but I know this is a small site. How many panels are you actually considering putting up there? That's more for my edification than it's going to mean either a go or no-go on this, but are we talking about thousands, or is it hundreds, or...
Yeah, it's basically, there's about 4,500.
4,500, okay.
Moderate, yeah.
I'm glad to see that the panels are being done further away from Plain Street, because we're right down here. I don't know what kind of noise level we're going to experience, probably none. I really enjoyed some of the comments about the schoolyard, because we've had our grandchildren over here, and that would be very close, and they're very curious kids anyway, but let's go over here, grandpa, and see what's going on. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from anyone in the audience? Yes, sir.
Chuck Gallagher, 201 Bay Road, just some general questions that I'm concerned about. What did you say the percentage of wetlands were on the, where the panels would be?
Well, there's no wetlands where the panels will be. You can see all the wetland boundaries right there on the map.
It was tough to see out there.
Yeah, we're keeping 50-foot buffer zones.
Okay, thanks. And how many batteries will there be?
No batteries.
No batteries, just because there's so many inverters, that's why?
No, we just, well, we could install them and probably make some extra money, but we did not incorporate battery storage on this.
Okay.
People do it to sell extra power to the utility. That's the only real reason.
Okay. Is the school on well water, do you know, or town water? Town water?
Town.
Thank you. How many actual residential butters are there on the panels?
There's 11 addresses that are within the butter, on the butter list.
Thank you. Do you have any idea if those are all on town water as well?
I actually don't know.
Okay. Have there been any, have you done any studies at all on this property, as far as how it'll affect water, affect any flooding, water tables?
Yes. Oh, yeah, as part of the filing that we made with this board and also with the conservation commission, we did a, you know, full stormwater study to address the impacts of the development on the amount of runoff that flows to the wetlands and to the abiding properties. So that is being reviewed by the town's consulting engineer right now, and we're working with him to make sure he's satisfied that there won't be any negative impacts from the development of the site. And that'll include not only the amount of runoff, but the water quality also, that it'll be, that any of the water generated will be cleansed before it's released towards the wetlands.
Do these panels, do they rotate or they stationary?
Stationary.
They stationary? They don't rotate with the sun or anything like that? Okay. You mentioned a pair of you earlier in the night, what was that? I didn't catch that.
Well, yeah, the town, the conservation commission in this instance hired a consulting engineering company, similar to our group here, that basically, on behalf of the town, they review our work. They go through all our calculations, and their job basically is to find problems, to find errors, to find issues of concern, and they end up, at some point, putting together a comment list, and that, of items that they would like to see addressed. And we are in that process right now. So it's a firm like us that works for the town. Proponent ends up paying for their fees, but they end up doing their work on behalf of the town.
I think another big concern would be the kids, like one of the other folks said, wandering around out of curiosity, getting into the property. Is there any danger to them if they enter by these panels? Is there any chance of getting electrocuted, or any wires they can get high on, or...
So the wires that are hot are inside the inverter. That's where the risk lies. We don't find that there's any more risk than someone sticking a fork in an electrical socket, or, and really, any way to get into the inverter itself.
Is it boxed in?
The inverters are locked, so they would have to pry open the metal and then get into an arc, and we've never heard that happen.
You're comfortable that your fence would keep kids from getting in there, because kids, you see, kids can climb trees?
I got in anywhere I wanted when I was a kid.
That's what I've been saying, yeah.
You can't deny that.
I know you can't stop everybody, but are you doing the best that you can, that you're able to do?
So there's the option, does the security fence have barbed wire? We could add barbed wire.
It's a seven-foot fence as opposed to...
We think barbed wire is more dangerous than the solid one.
What about security cameras? Any type of cameras set up to monitor it?
Oh, we can, it's a really easy add, it fits in with our monitoring system, so we have the option to add security cameras and usually do so, but it's not, as we mentioned in our plan.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from folks in the audience? Please, come on up.
Hello, Georgine Arventidis, 207 Bay Road. I just have a couple of questions. You mentioned that you're possibly planning to have the headquarters on Plain Street. Can you...
Just where we're going to sleep. So there's an existing home on the property.
Okay.
It's right now, no one's lived in it in a few years. We'd like to remodel it, and I spend half my time in Massachusetts, and I'd like to not stay in hotels anymore, so...
So it'd be your home, or would it be the headquarters? I'm confused.
Yeah, our home would be here, and then we'd like to get office space in Norton, not in the house.
Okay, and then my other concern, or question, or comment, I have a child who attends the LG, he's in second grade, and please correct me if I'm wrong, you said it would be 50 feet, these panels would be 50 feet from the school property line? Is that correct?
Panels would be 55 feet from the property line, and then the nearest inverter would be 230 feet.
Okay, I do have that. Would you consider making that a greater setback, so it's not that close to the school? Because 55 feet is, I don't know, it's not too far at all. That's really, really close to where hundreds of children will be playing. I'm just concerned.
Yeah, so we talked about, you know, based on the superintendent's comments about putting more space between the road and the school, if, like I said, I can't make that decision myself, I needed to talk to my company, because we'd be losing wattage, therefore losing money, so I can't make that decision with you, but it's definitely something we can look at. What's your concern about kids being close to the actual panels themselves?
Oh, there's a million. We're, we'll be here all night. I do have a lot of concerns, there's another proposed project right across the street from my house, within feet, so I am concerned that it'll be right across the street from my house, and now my children will be going to school within feet of another proposed solar plant, so we could be here all night.
Yeah.
But I do have many, many concerns, I know other residents do as well, but I was just considering if that was something that could be looked at and could happen, possibly.
It could, so again, we'll work with the superintendent, and if there are special needs students having issues, we obviously want to accommodate them. We can talk more about being close to panels, I mean, they're on a lot of people's houses and in parking lots of schools all over the country, and the panels themselves, I don't think pose any threat to...
That we know of. It's kind of early to say that there's, that could be, that's definite. Fair to say. Yeah, it is. Okay. All right, thank you for your time.
Okay.
Other questions or comments from members of the audience, or obviously from the board?
Is there anybody else out in the hall that needs to come in?
In the interim, you know, there are obviously a fair amount of consideration to be had on the application, and we're not going to decide this tonight, but we're running into a couple of logistical issues. We have a meeting on the 12th, but that is pretty full, and the only other meeting we have scheduled is for the 26th. Beyond that, we start to run into issues with members no longer being on the board, so although my sense is that we'd want to continue this to the 26th, we may either tonight or certainly on the 26th have to set new meetings, additional meetings, but those meetings may need to be weekly to wrap everything up before we lose some members. But in any case, for tonight and for everyone here, so that they know when we will continue this, the only other meeting we currently have beyond the 12th, which looks to be fairly full, is the 26th, so I entertain a motion to continue this to the 26th, if that's your pleasure.
Second?
All right. Do you have two names?
Dealer's choice, Nicole. And who was the second one? Okay.
Steven and Steve.
So there's been a motion and a second to continue the special permit and site plan for this project, those hearings to the 26th. We'll set up a time and perhaps even a location, because we're a little crowded tonight. In any event, there's been a motion, second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor to, for a continuance of the 26th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you very much, and thank you, folks. Again, it's the 26th, but I'm not 100% sure whether it'll be here or somewhere else.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Great.
I don't want to take material that's on the...
No, I mean, I should become more involved with the church, a few other things that I just want to confess, you know?
This is the modified plan, Paul, and the original.
Yeah, yeah.
And the submittal is here, and I think you've got everything else.
I have, I just need more office space. Yeah.
Folks, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Discontinue.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, that's a tough... Delete sitting. Second show.
Okay, as folks are settling in, the next item on the agenda is special permit 484 and as well as site plan for East Main Street slash Bernie and Phil's. Let's see, Mr. Trowbridge here. Is there anyone else representing the applicant? Just for purposes of disclosure, although I have not personally engaged Mr. Trowbridge, my son has for septic plan. And I don't know actually what the status of my daughter and son-in-law, but they may be contacting Mr. Trowbridge for some engineering and conservation work. Again, I don't have any direct involvement in any work that he's doing, but I just wanted to put that out there. In any case, I'll turn the floor over to you, Mr. Trowbridge.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm a resident of Red Mill Village in a butter, so I'll have to recuse myself.
Mr. Chairman, should I use this microphone?
Please. Actually, it doesn't matter, but since you're going to be referring to the plan, it might be easier.
For the record, my name is Michael Trowbridge, Hudson Trowbridge Associates. I represent Bernie and Phil's site plan this evening, seeking site plan approval and special permit. Special permit's required because we are increasing more than 15% impervious. It's zoned industrial, falls within the Zone 2 Water Protection District. Bernie and Phil's currently has 181,640 square foot building. In addition, they have a 13,968 square foot building over in this area. There's an entrance that comes in here into the parking and the loading area. There's areas for the trucks to actually park as well as passengers. There's passenger parking along the front. What we're proposing is a 49,000 square foot addition off the back right corner of the building. What we're not proposing is any new pavement for parking. We have more than enough parking spaces already for the facility. We're not proposing any new overhead doors or loading areas. Everything that would be accessed in here will be accessed internally. So what we have is really just the addition. So the detention basin was actually sized for just the roof drains. And as I said, there's no more parking being created. The required parking is one per 3,000 square feet, which requires approximately 81 spaces. We have about 107 spaces on-site at a minimum. As I said, we're not adding any additional pavement. We have the detention basin, which was designed for 100-year storm. We have no new loading docks. Management anticipates zero increase employees or trucks actually arriving at the site. So therefore, we're having no impact on the existing traffic patterns or flow. There's virtually very little impact to the area as it's behind the building. We're not creating any new entrances or driveway openings or any conflicts in traffic patterns. There is a substantial tax benefit to the town. Couple of things that had been brought up during the department head meeting was they requested a fence to be installed along the property line, along the town of Norton in this area, and along the back, which we agreed to a six-foot chain link fence. And what they wanted was swing gates with a lock so the town could actually gain access into their land off of the emergency access road. Another item that was requested was Conservation was looking for a post and rail fence along this area where the siltation control would be. We would agree to that as well. They were looking for a concrete rinsing area. That's something we would add to the plan. Trying to think if there was... All the issues that they were brought up were actually very minor in nature. I think that was pretty much the extent of the revisions that they were looking for at the staff meeting. This is something that does have to go to Conservation. Although we're not filling any bordering vegetated wetlands, we are within the 100-foot setback. So we will be filing with Conservation. So we would hope that we could continue this to a further date, approximately a month away, so we can actually get the paperwork in and start going through the Conservation process.
Tim?
How many loading doors currently are there at the property?
Excuse me?
How many loading doors or docks are there at the property approximately?
36. And there's no new ones being proposed?
There's no additions as part of this expansion? It's just need more warehouse space?
Yes. It's the way things are actually operated on the inside and rearranging things.
Yeah, I just know the trend in industrial space has been more and more and more, as many doors as you can get. So I'm just trying to keep that in this frame of reference.
Yeah, no, there's actually no access to put doors on this particular one. And the way it's actually laid out, this is where the trailer is actually backed up into. So you wouldn't be able to put loading doors over in there. And apparently, the 36 is sufficient. I've been over there numerous times. I've never seen close to the 36 doors even being used. Usually, it's about two or three doors.
And then that back corner.
Yeah.
Steve?
What's the proposed height of the addition? Is it in line with the...
It's going to match exactly with the front building.
Okay. And what's that height?
I do not have that. I don't think I'm...
30?
Exterior lighting, is there a plan?
It would be, building-mounted lights are already actually indicated on the back. We're trying, because it's Conservation land behind us, we're trying to keep like low-level-type lighting, just there for emergency purposes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, you've already answered some of my questions I had, so thank you for that.
Are there any exterior doors that would require lights?
Yeah, and that's something that we haven't worked out yet. That's something that will come actually during the, when the architect actually draws the actual plans. We haven't gotten that far.
We have a requirement that all lighting be dark sky compliant, so again, just something...
Okay, yeah, I know that was brought up about, you know, obviously for emergency egress and things like that.
Right, emergency egress from the addition. You'll work through that with the architect?
Yes. The builder inspector did bring that up, I believe, at the meeting.
Right at? At our meeting?
Yes.
Frank?
The Red Mill Village question, how close is the nearest butter residential-wise?
Has to be maybe somebody across the street.
I'm talking for Red Mill Village, though, so for the west or northwest of it. Is there currently...
Oh, they would be over 1,000 feet away?
Okay.
I would think. Yeah, they'd probably be about 1,000 feet away.
From the building or from the property?
From the, no, from the proposed addition.
Proposed addition, okay.
Yeah. This frontage, just from here to here, is 912. So we're almost 1,000 just to that lot line.
Okay. Yeah, because it's residential across the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you guys have 36 bays? Loading dock?
They have 36 loading docks.
How many trucks in general do you guys have there? How many trucks?
Doing, there's receiving goals and ship.
Right.
We have, on average, about 30, 32.
You do, okay. Industry standard for square footage-ish. Gotcha.
And this isn't going to change your operation, your hours of operation, when the trucks come and go? Standard, normal business procedure? You're basically just utilizing the space within your, hopefully, larger building more efficiently? Okay.
Questions from the audience?
Oren Segal, 28 Cotting Road. I'm a resident of Red Mill Village. I think the chairman of the Board of Trustees has submitted a letter. One of our concerns has been and remains traffic. I understand from what you're saying that there may be a limited amount of traffic. A couple of questions. My calculations on parking, based upon the addition, is 95 spaces? Now, the plan that I've seen, unless there's a more detailed plan, doesn't show any of the parking. It doesn't show any of the dimensions. Is there a plan that we have that shows the layout of the parking and the paving for where the parking is?
No. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Trowbridge, you said that currently you have 105?
It's about 107, I think it was. And I took that off of the existing asphalt, I think, that's on file here.
Is that truck bays or just parking?
No, that's just passenger parking.
Okay, is there, is there a way of getting a plan that reflects that?
Yeah, actually, you have that on file here, I think, at your town hall.
I think he's, as part of the special permit submittal, is that what we're...
And we could ask, as has been mentioned, this is going to be continued. So we could ask for a layout with the existing parking.
Yeah, there are no dimensions in the building, too. So I would like to see those dimensions built in the building. Also, the site approval requires landscaping for the parking. I don't know that there was one in the initial setup. I don't know now in a review whether there should be the requisite landscaping associated with the parking areas that are over 20 feet. One of the questions I had is, I've been commuting from down 123 in the evenings for almost 12 years. And every time I went by the parking lot, I always saw the smaller trucks and not too many of them. But recently, there seems to be an array of really larger trucks in that area that fill up the left-hand side of that parking lot. Has there been a change in the operation of that facility?
Change, I mean, it's, they just park the trucks out there in the front. There's not enough room in the back to park them.
And how much, how many, how often do those trucks run? And what's the timing of when they're running and out of the property?
Tuesday to Saturday.
Tuesday, just two days a week?
Tuesday through Saturday.
Two through Saturday. And what hours do they typically run and come in and out?
5:30 to, you know, they're usually done by 4:00. Trucks, a lot of times they're back by 1:00, 2:00 o'clock in the afternoon.
Okay. Is there any gas or repair facilities on-site? Is there any showroom on-site?
No.
And you do have, you said, office space. In your presentation, you referenced 2,300, 2,500 square feet of office space. And I think you also mentioned 23 parking spaces in your presentation. I don't know where you...
Did I just said 23 spaces?
No, in your presentation, that you filed.
Okay, I have to look at that. No, there's more than 23 spaces.
Okay. Could see them. And there was, when I went by this afternoon, the entire parking lot was filled up with cars. Is there something specific that was going on this afternoon around 11:00? I've never seen that before.
Where are you talking about?
At the building. The entire...
Everybody's there at work.
Is that, so how many people do you have working there?
In the warehouse, 75.
75? And in the office?
Guests, 24.
And the parking spaces that you refer to, is that in addition to, in addition to that, you have loading zones, loading bays for trucks?
The loading area is in the back. And the area where you're talking about where the larger trucks, that's a actual staging area for the trucks. That's the way it was originally designed.
Okay.
Over to the far left-hand side.
Okay. And if you could, when you re-present it, if you could include the trucks?
I can't hear you when you're facing that way. I'm sorry.
If you re-present it, if you could include the truck bays, so we can see where they are in addition to the parking?
He's recused.
Now, have you submitted, are you in Conservation? Have you gone to Conservation yet?
No, as I previously said a few minutes ago, I said we have. We would be getting ready to go to Conservation.
Okay.
I think that's all.
Just?
Yes, sir.
Just before we do, if I missed it, gentleman in the cap, your name and position?
Gregory Hewitt, I'm the warehouse manager.
Warehouse manager, okay, thank you. Our question's going away, so I just wanted to make sure we knew who you were.
Thank you. I'm just here for a few seconds. I'm Gary Perkins, the chairman of the Board of Trustees at Red Mill Village. Earlier today, as Mr. Segal mentioned, I sent over an email to Paul. I just want to make sure you all have it. If you need copies, I printed them out if anybody needs to see it or if you have it. Do you need them?
Got it.
We have it, yeah.
Okay. So I don't really have anything new to say, other than the fact that we are, we have been and we consider, and we continue to be concerned about the traffic on Route 123. And the ability to exit Red Mill Village on 123 continues to get worse, whether it's from the apartments, potentially from this, or they say they won't be, as well as from the Blue Star Business area. We're very concerned about that, especially taking a left out of Hastings Way onto 123. It's difficult, and we're an over 55 community with some, average age 71. And we're just concerned about it. I want to make sure you guys, please, take that into consideration when you look at this project and any other project in the area. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the audience or the board? Given the fact that you'll be going to Conservation and they may require some changes to the plan. And I think it does make sense to show your parking configuration as it currently exists, assuming that won't change. If, for whenever we meet again, if you could give us a plan showing that already existing parking and may as well put the truck bays.
Yeah, I just showed the closest ones. I just want to make sure I address one in the comments you said about the buildings not to mention the addition? There actually is. It's the next page. It's, there actually is on this one as well. 247 by 200, and it has all the setbacks. Excuse me?
Existing building?
No, on the proposed addition.
I didn't know if there's anything else for tonight that you'd want to address. Otherwise, we can continue to another date, which again, would probably be the 26th of March.
Is there a meeting or anything planned with ConsCom?
No, that's why I was thinking, what would be your next meeting after that?
We haven't set one. Just so you know, we're running in, there are at least two members that will not be with us beyond the election, is what, the 20th?
Third.
Third.
23rd.
So...
23rd of April.
Of April.
Okay.
And since you're going to need five, you know how this works, and you're going to lose two, we need to, you know, act on this before the 23rd. And that's something we're going to have to talk about tonight in terms of scheduling meetings for April.
And that's in addition to...
Or...
Obviously, Oren is not going to participate in terms of a vote, so...
Okay.
Clearly, we need to wrap this up.
Yeah, I mean, would I have to wrap up a very minor in detail? I can get that done.
Okay. Is there a motion to continue this to March 26th?
Moved. Second?
All right, so do you have that, Nicole, in terms of...
Too quick.
It's been a motion and a second to continue this to March 26th. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of continuing this to March 26th? Location and time to be determined. Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on back, Oren. Exactly.
You have a policy? Do you distribute that or you still have it?
I still have it.
He knows it's already...
He knows it's already...
There are no minutes to accept and no bills to pay.
All right, will we touch?
No bills?
No bills, no minutes, however, as we've talked about, we only have two other meetings scheduled, one for the twelfth, is it? And one for the twenty-sixth.
Paul?
I'm sorry?
Are we going to have to sign this?
Oh, it ended up, I was, where did it go?
All right, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna...
Oh, that's the thing, Paul Kimball?
Yeah.
That's in the folder?
I'm sorry?
The, um, the right, the policy?
Yeah.
Of the board, no, of the Board of Selectmen is in the folder, too.
Okay, but we don't have to act on that.
We don't have to act on that.
But we have a policy that we talked about. In any case, before getting to that policy, I want to nail down some dates, and my concern, well, since the election's on the twenty-third, we can't actually meet on Election Day. There are three Tuesdays, the second, the ninth, and the sixteenth.
May as well pencil them all in, huh?
Well, that's, that's the point of my stumbling here, is that...
Yeah.
You folks will go out with a bang, but if we're in agreement, then let's...
I would, I'll just add that I would recommend that the board try as much as possible to close things out that can be closed out prior to the meeting of the sixteenth.
I agree.
For, for the, well, for the additional reason that my wife's expecting in mid-April, so...
This is a very fruitful board.
Yeah, we need, no offense, Orin, but I expect grandchildren, I don't have to be present for those, so...
I was just wondering, you, Frank, if there's a grandchild, this is tough.
So, yeah, it's, yeah.
No, I...
You never know when that's going to happen?
I understand.
Oh, Tim, if you go down, we'll be the last one standing.
I know, we're still on the...
Let me ask you this, since you're allowed to miss one meeting...
I have not missed any.
I understand that, but, but is any of these are that precarious that they, you know, there's, we're waiting for things from conservation? If you, if we go with a new board, new other people, they could then, if they miss one meeting for these newer projects, then they can still be able to decide on them?
I, to be honest, Orin, I don't know how that would apply, because they weren't members...
Okay.
I, I don't know, that's a, that's a good point, I mean, the Mullen Rule allows existing members to miss one, but if they weren't members when they missed the meeting, I don't know whether that would apply or not.
We should be ready to vote by mid-April anyways.
I, I mean, to be honest, and I had said something early to Paul, and I understand these things are both complicated, in some cases contentious, but if we were paid on a productivity basis, I'm not saying we haven't...
We wouldn't be paid.
Right. So, I mean, I'd like to move, move some of these along, and notwithstanding that, you know, that, for example, in the case of Blue Star, they're, you know, still working with the Concom, but to the extent that whatever the Concom may require, to the extent that that may be a minor modification, I would just as soon act on it, and then if they have to come back for a minor modification of what we grant, or if in fact we grant a special permit, then it can be modified by whoever's on the board at the time, but we're both running out of time, but we're also kind of bogged down in, in lack of productivity, so...
And in terms of any new, potential new items that come up, I mean, I think there has to be consideration of pushing those out until after.
And there's a new one coming next week, although this should be a simple one, it's a bakery.
I saw the public notice in the paper today. Yeah. I already told Paul that, we already said that if they can't bring...
A bakery?
A bakery, Peter.
What is that?
The sweet shop.
Next week, come back next week.
Does the board action go to the closing of the hearing or the actual decision? Because writing the decision gets a little difficult, that's...
And I may be, again, I'm on very, very shaky ground, but I believe a new board member, if the decision has been made, and I believe a new board member can sign that decision because he or she is ratifying the action of a board, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. I know that, you know, I've been on boards, it's not a special permit, that even though I wasn't a participant at the time, I knew that it was an action of the board, and I was able to sign. If we get to that stage, that's something that we're going to have to, actually, before we get to that stage, if we're not moving along, that's something we're going to have to verify, that, you know, if the decision isn't ready to be signed by the sixteenth of, of April, then we're going to have to see who can in fact sign it, and perhaps, and this, you don't have to have a meeting to sign the decision, but, you know, the action certainly has to be taken, and I'm not sure if you have to have a meeting to ratify the language of the decision, but I think the signature ratifies the, the decision, but again, that's, that's, that's if we have to...
The chair, or...
No, no, the, the members of the board have to sign the special permit decision, and you don't have to be at a meeting to sign.
We've signed special...
And whether the signature in essence is a ratification of that decision, I don't know, but...
Yeah, I don't recall all members signing.
The only thing everybody signs is the plans.
I mean, yeah, they had our plans and such, but I don't, I'm just saying, I don't recall.
You may be right.
Yeah, and I'm still, I'm not up for elections, so...
So, you're still running, and you're not expecting...
I just don't remember us...
Addition to the family, or...
I'm going to read it before I sign.
You would, you would vote, that gets recorded, and then the clerk signs it, of course, the chair would review, the clerk signs it.
So, as long as it's been approved, yeah, then it wouldn't be somebody new signing.
Yeah.
I'll be discussing, I'll be talking with Town Council tomorrow, particularly in regards primarily to the Fairland Farms, some questions I have on that, and I'll bring up this question too, about with the elections coming up, how would she recommend what happens, you know, I'll talk to her about the election coming up, and that we have some members leaving, new members coming on board.
Well, yeah...
We should be close to wrapping that up anyways, right?
That's certainly the hope, and again, I don't want to wait till the last minute for, you know, a snowstorm or some other unforeseen event, but I think we have exhausted a lot of the, the issues, exhausted is probably the wrong word, but we've examined many of the issues that are on both of the special permits, so hopefully, we're going to be able to move, move before certainly the twenty-third.
I do think we need the clarity among all of the board of specifically what it is we are approving, you know, in terms of, you know, before or after the, the bylaw change, and what applies when it's, you know, I want to make sure that everybody's clear on, you know...
Well, and, and maybe ignorance is bliss, and I'm ignorant of what it is that we're approving, but in all cases, in terms of the solar farm, we are approving under, because the, Fairland applied under the old lack of bed regime of zoning bylaws, correct? Notwithstanding...
But they intend that they don't need to stick by it.
But, yes, yes, in one, to one extent, that they applied for the special permit for the large-scale solar facilities, however, they also are applying, I think the bigger issue is, the old provision states you can't build, you cannot place these in wetlands, and that's one of the changes that occurred at the town meeting, to make the exception for cranberry bogs. So, that's a question I have for, for Amy tomorrow as well, is, this came in, we received the application prior to town meeting.
Well, they also applied both ways.
Right.
So, they would have to withdraw one of them with prejudice, and we would have the right to say, yeah, they could or not, but I, I wouldn't, we couldn't decide it with two petitions out there.
Right, they could...
They pick which one they want.
They still had to apply for several of the special permits because of the flood plain, the wetland, but it's the question of, did they have to apply for the special permit just because they were a large scale? So, that's, that's a question where we'll be talking to Amy about.
I promise I'll get you the question that I promised I'd get you.
Oh.
Yeah. Whether, it may already be included in what you're going to bring up. So, are we good on April?
We're, we're set for the three Tuesdays in April.
Could you repeat those, I'm sorry?
Two, nine, sixteen.
All Tuesdays in April?
All Tuesdays in April.
Second, the ninth, and the sixteenth.
Bernie and Phil's was continued, did we give them a date?
Twenty-sixth.
We said the twenty-sixth.
Both of those were continued, the twenty-sixth of March. All right, we, the only other item, we'll consider that under planning board business.
I think I accidentally sent, Julie, you already had one, so I had printed ten of these out, but this was a follow-up to the meeting, my apology, I think it would have been attached with Mike's email.
A copy of...
Oh, sorry, Orin.
I read it over, or on shoulder, yeah.
Well, there's another copy.
But this is just a follow-up to last Thursday's discussion about information coming within, needing to get it at least, no more than a week, at least a week prior to the meeting.
Right.
So, this was an attempt, so, to capture what you all had talked about, and added some things, such as additionally, any changes in the application should be reflected in the plan or in the narrative, and then there was a comment too, that the planning board can waive strict compliance with this policy, and I think this was to address Joe's concern about, you know, minor information being distributed. So, I would just ask if you have any, any improvements to this?
I have, I have two, two suggested edits to this. The second sentence, failure to submit material within seven days will result, I'd rather see that may result, I don't, I want to be caught up...
I was debating that, and I was like, I'll just go, okay.
And then the last sentence, the planning board may waive strict compliance with this.
Oh.
So, two introductions.
What suggestions, is that like that?
Well, okay, the only problem, if you do that when they submit it late, how do they know?
Well, it's seven days prior to the scheduled public hearing.
Yeah, but then it may be continued, as opposed to, we have the right to waive it, so they have to ask for it to be waived, so they submit it, and they're going to say, well, did you waive it, did you not waive it, did you vote? I'm not sure what point they know whether or not it's been accepted, and they're going to have to continue it.
That's Paul.
Well, we could, I can certainly, if it comes in, if it's within the seven-day window, I think, then I can say, well, there's a policy, they may just, you know, continue your item, continue the item, or not act on it, depending on...
We wouldn't think at the meeting, right?
At the meeting, but the board would have, this is reserving the board's right to do so.
Yeah, like this here, we, I mean, a lot of this we just got, so if we get this...
The planning board reserves the right to waive...
At this meeting, we could, we could motion and vote to postpone.
And it's also, we'd have to, this permit would be, assuming it's like a special permit, it's something that's noticed, having the, they show up to the hearing, and we would continue it appropriately for everybody who was noticed and appeared to hear that, so I think that's...
Well, the first noticing, the first meeting is the one that would have the noticing.
Right.
Everything else is a continuation, so I think we find, this is really applying for, to, although it happened tonight, I'm contradicting myself because the information that Plain Street provided, we just got now.
Right.
I didn't, so, but, but we continued that anyway, so, you know, I think this gives...
That kind of information is a little bit different, I mean, if they came in with a revised plan or something like that. The other thing that I'm concerned about is, I was at a meeting that, that the people came in for a conservation, and they didn't find out to, I mean, I checked online before I actually walked in the door, and it wasn't continued, and they were there, and all of a sudden, they said, the meeting's been continued. So, I'd like to be able to see, you know, if they, if they submit something and it's late, you can say, no, we're not accepting this, they have the right to go forward without that material, or, or continue it, but then you'd know that week before, and you could post it, and then people in the audience...
If they're going to give us something the day before, then we're not going to continue it until we get to the meeting, so we're not going to, we would have to make the decision as a board to continue it.
Well, but that, that's not fair to the public, the public is coming to this meeting, and so basically, if it's, you know, at some point, we need to make it before then, they're going to say, okay, you're here now, but now we're not going to hear it, you're going to re-continue?
Well, I'm, I'm a little lost, because you're just talking about continuations or the initial public hearing?
Essentially, kind of what happened with Blue Star last week, essentially something like that, where somebody would show up looking to speak at that public hearing, but then show up and immediately find out it's been continued, and have to go home.
Yes, I mean, that's, that's part of it.
But that, under this policy, they're not going to be scheduled for, they're not going to be on the agenda if the material hasn't come in.
Well, at conservation, literally, at every meeting, they stand up and read the policy, and they say, if you don't submit materials a week before, you can't, we're not going to accept it. We're not accepting it unless it comes in a week before, that's their policy, and they, because it's not written anywhere, and nobody knows it, they actually recite it every single meeting, so people are aware that they can't be submitting stuff the day before and expect it to be addressed.
Didn't we, we already discussed this and voted on this, though?
I know.
I mean, this is just the wording for this, I don't know why we need to...
Paul's the gatekeeper on this, if, if someone comes in and says to Paul, three weeks from now, I'm going to come in with an application for whatever, and can you put me on the agenda? Fine, you know, the agenda gets posted forty-eight hours in advance, so that's, the agenda's not going to be posted for some time. If in fact Paul hasn't received the material that he, that, you know, he feels we need prior to seven days, he's going to tell the applicant, you're not on the agenda because you didn't receive, we didn't receive the information, so the agenda doesn't go out notifying people that the, the item is on, Nicole?
I send notices fourteen days ahead of time.
In terms of special, right, in terms of special permits?
Most applications have to be fourteen days prior, plus they have to go in the newspaper, so if we had to cancel it seven days before, I'd have to re-notice all those of others.
But in, in a case like that, here again...
Just saying, I don't know.
I understand.
Just so you know, I'll do it, but...
But, again, in a case like that, then I would think before an application is even scheduled for a, a public hearing, you're going to have all the information you need. If they want to fine-tune it, and that is significant, then we run the risk of, yes, we notice people, and we're not going to continue it because they came in with a completely revised plan, and, you know, that's unfortunate, but I don't know what else we do.
Or like in the case of tonight with, with Plain Street, they had, now, of course, this was the first time you were hearing it, but you could still give them an opportunity, even if this is, this often, this has happened a few times with Condyne, we get information within a few days of the hearing, you could at least let them present the material to you to get an understanding, and then just, we're not acting on it.
Yeah, we need time to, yeah, review, digest it, you know, form our opinions.
So, this gives you that flexibility.
Right, but I think the stick to with the policy is that we don't want people walking in, because it's a waste of everyone's time, three days before a continued or whatever hearing, and then, you know, we, we need time to digest it, so we've, we've wasted that. If, if they're on notice that we need this stuff seven days in advance, that's their impetus to get it to us seven days in advance, so we can act on it, and there isn't a continuation.
And we're meeting next, next Tuesday, so, you know, we should be getting any new materials.
Today.
Today, you know?
And I think that's led to some of, probably the unproductivity that I think some of us are feeling on some of the things, because it's really hard to try and listen and read, and you can't, you can't do it all, and I think that, that, that we struggled with that because we have had a lot of very...
And there's been...
Complex topics.
A lot of information, I mean, you know, hundreds and hundreds of pages of information, you know?
Can't evaluate that.
This is to avoid that happening again.
Yeah.
Right, right, so, I mean, you know, it's, it's, I think the best attempt to reel that in a little bit, you know?
So, I'd like to make a motion to accept that, with the changes in the wording?
Well, just one quick clarification, if I can...
Is there a motion, let me just, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, discussion.
If there's a revised plan that works in our favor, less than seven days, would we may consider that to speed up the process as opposed to waiting for a whole week?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's why...
I'm ready to vote now.
Waive, the, waive the compliance piece.
That would be the...
That's why, yeah, they're changing it from can or must to may. Right, that's right, for that.
So, can to may, yeah.
So, the, the motion does add the word will as opposed to may, or makes it...
No, the...
Changes them to may. It gives the board flexibility.
Good.
Will and can become may and may.
Yes.
Good.
May, may.
Any, any further discussion on this drafted language?
Could you just read that sentence, please?
The whole thing, or...
Or just that sentence?
The second sentence will be, failure to submit material within seven days may result in the application being continued at the scheduled public hearing. Additionally, the last sentence will be, the Planning Board may waive strict compliance with this policy.
Okay, so the way it's written, we can't, we can't continue it until the hearing? Is that what happens, the way that reads?
We wouldn't be able to continue it to the hearing anyways.
Has to be open.
Have to open the public hearing to continue it.
And here again, as gatekeeper, I, we have to rely on Paul, that if an application is not complete, or the applicant says, well, and I've got a ton more information, well, guess what, you're gonna have a ton more time to wait because we're not gonna start with this. But again, if it's, if Paul notices something, hey, I, you know, I need, this, this application isn't signed or whatever, and he's, you know, those types of things, we can go.
We're not, we're not talking about those things.
Right.
And that's not, that's not an issue. And even some of the stuff that was given today, it's, it's just supplemental, and I get, no one's gonna stand on, except we can't be expected to ask them questions on it and, and review it while they're talking.
Right, exactly.
That's the whole point of coming.
They know they're gonna be subject to it.
Yeah.
Okay, there's been a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, it's almost like I feel we ought to be, which obviously we can't, but working on something and rather than going home at night.
Can I suggest, at least initially, we, we recite that at the next couple of hearings and maybe.
Sure.
Let someone file something, maybe you, you hand that out to them too?
I can give it to them?
Yeah, so they'll know.
Put it online and.
I'll take it to the front of my desk.
Yeah.
Perfect.
You have lots of visitors, so.
This is outside of any specific thing. Would you be, would it be possible to get the original study that's in Appendix H of the Plain Street from the Clean Energy Center?
What?
This, the study from the Clean Energy Center, just as an individual item for the Board and/or people who ask about sound and radiation and noise levels related to other solar applications? I don't know if we're able to give that on another applicant. I assume it's a publicly available report.
Tim, it's posted.
Yeah, but that would be.
On the Fairland Farm link I have on the town website, that study is on there.
That's on there as well?
Cause they had it.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm, sorry, I thought you were referring, was there a study they were referencing in there?
It's a consideration.
No, that's all, you have that.
Clean energy study?
Yes, and, and there was another one related to it, there was a Q and A related to that study as well, so it's on Fairland Farm, and I think we also put it in next, or the Plain Street search as well.
I have a question, is there a way of accessing the Dropbox other than going through where Nicole sends us? I keep on finding the email to, to be able to get back into the.
We, we just need to simplify it and give you access right to the Planning Board.
Yeah, we just go right into, yeah, Dropbox.
Planning Board.
Yeah, there was a.
You guys can go to.
High-level folder that you really just.
Yeah.
The link to, then all the subfolders underneath.
I, I have made, well, because of the amount of information, I've, I've tried to separate it, but we've come up, we think with something, like, if you want to read what, what the applicant has provided, click here, no subfolders, it's just, we'll date them, and then staff review, so we'll, we'll send out, we'll resend the link to the Planning Board main folder. And by the way, there's a lot of information Condyne just provided, that's in Dropbox now. A lot of it relates to the wetlands and stormwater, but it's in Dropbox, right, it was added today.
I put it in today.
So, we will send.
Do you let us know when something is added to the Dropbox, or?
Um, usually when he does the little like, here's what's coming up in the meeting, da-da-da, he puts the links there.
Cause I will be sending a lot more emails if I do that, that's.
Well, but, in fact, the A and R, we didn't get, did we get any, any things on that A and R that was on today? We didn't get that, you said it was coming.
We only got, that, that application is the only thing in their folder.
Oh, I, I did not, they never gave us the digital, that's why.
Yeah.
Usually we asked for a digital, we didn't get it for it, so that's, that's why we.
There might be a way to set up notifications in the Dropbox when something is added.
Okay.
I'm hypothesizing here.
You always got a job.
That seems like something that you would be able.
Like you would get like on SharePoint, right, Tim, is what you're thinking?
Yeah.
Yeah. Somebody's added.
I administer, I administer a SharePoint site for my office, unfortunately.
Box or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, if there's something we can do to help us at least know when things are there, or easily get to something, if it's not the, not a public one, but one that.
Yeah.
Has all of them, we just go into it.
Yeah, we'll just end up giving you the link back to the Planning Board, and you'll see the.
Different projects?
Files.
Is Blue Star at Concom next week, or when, before the?
They are, I think they're next week, there's two, they have two meetings.
Is that Monday?
On Mondays.
So they're doing back-to-backs on Monday and Tuesday?
No, they have.
Or do we have a group?
They, they're, they're going to the ZBA on Thursday.
They're going to ZBA Thursday, they're going to Concom Monday, and then back here Tuesday.
Where's Tuesday's meeting?
Uh, the middle school.
It's gonna end up at the middle school.
Okay, so we're going back there for next Tuesday?
Yeah, the media center was, was busy.
I've asked Paul to look into whether the presenters and, and Board can be up on the stage if there's sufficient lighting, and arrange it so that, you know, we.
Well, Fairland Farms, right?
Right.
Right.
So that we can see what the presenter is showing, rather than them being down on the floor, I had difficulty seeing what they were.
Agreed.
So if they're all up, if we're all up on the stage, I, I hold the respect to the Butters and everyone else, but, you know, we're the first ones that need to know what it is that we're acting on.
Is there any way to get table mics to?
You'd need to have the, yeah, that did need to be through the lighting board in the back.
I'm sorry?
That'd need to be through the lighting board in the back. I know what the technology teacher generally runs that.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes, Mike Kramer, usually runs the lighting board when theater groups or other groups use this.
Well, I mean, obviously we need spotlights, but if there are lights that just can be turned on.
There's nothing right over that area. And all the lights behind are fixed in one spot, you can't touch them, the ones that are over the actual coral stage itself. So the only lights that would turn on in that area are the ones that are up in the roof in front of you, as you look up the ceiling.